...right that will indicate how much time is remaining. When you have 30 seconds left, a bell will sound. When your time is up, the bell will sound again. Before you begin your comments, please state your name.
Good evening and welcome to your Fort Worth City Council Public Comment Meeting. I'll call us to order.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Bishop Donald Hayes from Gift Ministries. Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledges of allegiance.
Let us pray. This is the day the Lord has made, let us rejoice and be glad in it. Father, we thank you for the invitation to come and get this invocation for the board. We pray to bless our mayor of the city, continue God to keep her on the wings and make her strong as she continue to lead this city. Pray for every district represented here, to bless them, God, that they keep their job moving forward, to bless the city that they work in. Pray, God, to bless our DPS department, police, fire, and EMS, that they keep us safe. I pray, God, to watch over them, continue to bless this meeting tonight, have your divine mercy, God, and give them peace. Look, when every problem, God, that comes our way, you are a problem solver, and we thank you for it. In the name of Jesus, blessing, in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
...the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honorable citizens alike, our legislative city, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Mayor and council, our first action item will be the approval of the minutes from the February 13th, 20th, and 27th council meetings.
Move to approve.
Motion a second, council, any discussion? Please vote. Charlie, thank you. You gotta click it again, we can't advance it, thank you. Motion clears. Passes, sorry.
Mayor and council, that's all of the action items, the rest is speakers.
Thank you. Our next, our first speaker is Bob Willoughby, followed by Don Brewer.
Well, I didn't see any rejection, there you go. Can I turn it up?
Thank you.
Is it playing? Turn it up. Is it up? It's not up, there's no sound. They took the sound off. From the beginning, they did sound off, you need the sound on from the very beginning.
Bob, just a second, they're humans, they're trying to fix it.
You think you'll start it off and play from the beginning?
Happy Tuesday, Bob, just a second. Thank you. I'm gonna call Don Brewer and then come back to Bob, so having technical difficulties, we'll start that over. Is Mr. Brewer here? Hi, Don, come on down, please, thank you.
I have handouts if any of y'all.
If you don't mind handing them here and we'll take them, thank you, yes, sir. Ronald, hand them out. Thank you. You can go ahead, please, thank you.
Yes, first off, I'd like to thank the city council for especially for supporting us in the past on this landfill operation. I am here again to plead for y'all's support and to encourage y'all to again contact TCEQ to inform them that this is a poor idea. The deal is that the landfill is on top of an aquifer, it's on a flooded zone, it's on a city property, or next to city property, it's on the lake, it might as well be in the middle of the lake. All water feeding from Silver Creek feeds directly into the lake as well as everything off this property. So anything done on its property would automatically contaminate the lake. This aquifer as well as the city, so I had, excuse me, I feel like I got echo here.
You're okay.
Okay, thank you. But I wanted to, like I said, have everybody look at it as it stands right now, according to their platting, this is at water level, it's at 600 is according to the, forgive me here. The groundwater conservation district is where the water is. At the highest point on this is 620, most of it's at 600 and below, so it's right there in the water table. And as such, like I said, anything done on this, it's operating on a 50-year-old landfill permit that was never exercised, and now then they're trying to put something on there. This will contaminate everything and there's no way you can stop it. And I would submit that y'all resubmit stuff to TCEQ. I also went back, which y'all will probably want to check and see, is that the city is responsible for Lake Worth, as such, since it is a water source. Now then, under Water Development Board Section 260136, Water Quality Management, the city of Fort Worth's responsibility is to manage the functions, including enforcement. And under Local Government Section 26175, y'all are responsible to please stop and monitor. TCEQ has no control, nor will they monitor, or nor will they do anything. So I implore y'all to please, please help us, help y'all, so that we can stop this from turning into a superfund site.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer. I, have you gotten to personally speak with anybody from our legal department or Dr. Wittenberg?
No, I have not, and I would.
We'll have someone follow up with you, and we have protested, as you know, you're not, we've got your information here, thank you for submitting that, and I'll make sure someone gets to talk with you tomorrow.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Of course.
Yes, I would be glad to give them, I have lots more documentation, and I would be more than happy to submit and meet with anybody, but.
We appreciate it very much, yes, sir.
It's fighting the city hall sometimes.
No, no, we're not fighting, and we're on the same side of the protest, yes, sir.
Trying to get the right person to talk to it.
We can, we can arrange that, yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Do we have that video ready for Mr. Willoughby? Getting there? Okay, we'll go to Rita Ramon and we'll come back when it's ready. We just wanna make sure it's gonna play, Bob, just a second. Is Ms. Ramon here? Rita Ramon? Okay, David Martinez, is Mr. Martinez here? There he is.
Sorry, I had something prepared, but Facebook went down today.
Technology.
Yeah, and so I apologize. Usually I come up here and I thought, speaking from the heart, usually I just go ahead and say stuff, but what I found out is that when I speak, sometimes I offend certain people, certain groups, not intentionally. But today, usually when I speak, I speak for others, either it's children, issues, things like that with my community, and neighborhood, South Side, Carter Park. But today I'm gonna bring up stuff that involves me. Okay, so bear with me. Okay, so usually I come over here to speak, but I wanted to bring up, like, when I was growing up, I come from a mixed family. I was adopted by my grandmother, and we had other, I had other siblings and stuff like that that were adopted, and so I was around a mixed family and stuff like that. So growing up, I didn't know, like, we didn't, we didn't speak about color or ethnicity, things like that, because we're all mixed, you know? And so I was gonna bring pictures to show y'all, but I couldn't get it off Facebook. So anyways, but the thing I wanna talk about is, as I got older and I started learning, well, this is who you are, that's, that's, that's your color, that's your race, that's your ethnicity. And as I got older, I also learned that, you know, because there was a TV show, there was Michael J. Fox, and he loved Ronald Reagan, and I loved that show, and I was like, oh, Ronald Reagan, I like Ronald Reagan. We went from living in, like, really ran down house and apartments, and as we got, I got older, my mother invested in a business, and, you know, we ended up living off Elizabeth Boulevard in a nice house. And we ended up getting a maid and all that stuff, so we went through a change, but what I also wanna bring up now is that a lot of people talk about gentrification. And so growing up, I didn't know about all that stuff, and I didn't know about Republican, Democrat, I didn't know all that stuff, I'm just me, David Martinez. But I notice now it's campaign and election time and all that stuff, and everybody's doing this, never did I ever think that a Kennedy would not be on a Democrat ticket. And we're living in a time where things are changing now, so I wanted to bring up that, I know some of y'all, like, nobody on this city council is, hates each other. Everybody works together, but the community doesn't see that. They think it's ours and these, and I'm trying to tell everybody, no, we're all trying to win, we're all trying to help the community. A lot of, some of us come from where we, you know, we have something that happened to us in our life, but we wanna do for others.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez, we appreciate it. Next speaker, is the video good? Okay, okay, we're gonna try that. Mr. Willoughby, let's try that again.
It's working.
Mayor Mattie Parker. At the last public comment two weeks ago, it was brought to your attention that the Director of Communications and Public Engagement, Michelle is not doing the job she is hired to do. I have received no response from you or your office.
Since my inauguration, I promised to attack problems and not people, and I have continued to live by that in office. I believe this philosophy is more important now than ever. We live in a divisive time. To solve real problems, we need honest debate and facts.
Mayor Mattie Parker, we ask you, how can there be an honest debate when you will not respond? Mayor Mattie Parker, the pictures I placed to be seen were not shown on TV like the way they were shown at the meeting, and like the other speaker at the city comment meeting, February 20th, 2024.
Right. To solve real problems, we need honest debate and facts, not attacks that have not a single shred of evidence to back them.
Mayor Mattie Parker, your words say one thing, but your actions show another.
Yes, the only reason our two callers are by phone is they decided it would be appropriate to curse out a 12-year-old Little League team while they were here celebrating their win, so we just kinda put a stop to that for a few months, hoping that it can come back in the spring and be a little better behaved, especially around children.
Mayor Mattie Parker, where are your facts? You have no evidence, that is a 100% lie, what you said about Bob Willoughby. This has to be the worst lie that was ever told by a mayor. To say Mr. Willoughby cusses children when it is not true, that is low-down and dirty. The city council may not discuss or deliberate about topic not specifically listed on the agenda, including those presented during the public comments section of the agenda. Mayor Mattie Parker, do the rules not apply to you?
Mr. Johnson, may I ask a question really quick, if you don't mind? Thank you. I know that you've worked really closely with Tanisha in my office in the past, and she's been an excellent help, I've really enjoyed coming out to Highland Hills. I just want you to keep an open communication with my office and with Councilman Nettles as well. You're right, there's no excuse for that, and I'm glad you connected with Chief Nokes, but I will commit to you, I'll reach out. Tanisha's been ill the last few weeks, but someone else in my office, okay, good. She shouldn't be answering the phone right now, I hope she wasn't, I figured that's how she is, yeah. But we're still here for you, and I'm happy to come back out again and visit with you and your neighbors, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you.
Our next speaker is Diana Madrono, followed by Dohia Nguri.
Is audio okay? Good evening, all. I wanna start off by thanking you guys for this platform, for allowing the public to come and provide, you know, their concerns, so thank you for your time and attention tonight. My name is Diana Madrono, and my family and I live in District 5. I'm here tonight to speak about a park in our neighborhood that has been waiting for a decade to be completed, Mojer Valley Park. The park site has a historic marker to commemorate the Mojer Valley Park that once stood there. The city of Fort Worth purchased the park property in 2014, and within the past 10 years, has not made substantial progress to fully complete the park. Just last month, on February 17th, there was a community meeting, which we greatly appreciate, but yet we heard two concerning items. One, it was mentioned by mistake and completely understand that it was said by mistake that there are no public arts for the, public art funds for the park. But that led that statement to be published in the Fort Worth Report on February 24th. Post the meeting, I've received confirmation that the public art funds are there, but I want the public to know that that was a mistake spoken there. But it also gave us the impression that when someone stops looking, funds get reallocated or moved. I traced back the annual work plans year after year after those funds were approved, and they appeared on those annual work plans up until last year in 2023. Second, it was mentioned a timeline of one year to design the park and another year to construct. If 10 years wasn't long enough, another two more years. So I'm here to plead that the city stop kicking the can down the road and start constructing and finish what it should have done years ago. My children should not have to be here tonight, instead, they should be enjoying a completed park. So I'll leave you with this question, is now finally the time for Mojer Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Madrono, I'm gonna make sure that Mr. Zavala connects with you tonight, thank you. Mr. Nguri.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, respected members of the city councils. Thank you for giving me a time to speak a few words here. For too long, our community has awaited for the construction of this park that my neighbors just mentioned. There's been a lot of bureaucratic hurdles. Fund is being allocated to the other side of the city, construction or improvement works from the fund that was meant to be spent for this park. I'm not here to point out any particular council members or team for the delay or anything, but this is 10 years for just simple open field park is unacceptable and unhearted of. There's not really any structural or mechanical or anything that needs to be considered, so looking at just plain ground with basic trail for the kids to walk around and playground, and funding of $900,000 to do such construction in 10 years, I don't know what explains for 10 years' delay on that. The delay in this park is not only inconvenient, but it's also a disservice to the resident who have long awaited for this space to gather, to play, and connect. It is denial of fundamental right, right to access green space, community facilities, to foster the sense of belonging and well-being. The ramification of this delay extends far beyond the confined space of the paperwork and procedure obstacles. It is felt in the face of the children who have now nowhere to play, nowhere to run. The frustration in the face of the parents seeking the safe environment for their families and disillusionment for the neighbors who have felt forgotten and neglected. I cannot stand idly by promise that were made and remain unfulfilled. Deadlines are missed, and voices are silenced by the force of these bureaucratic corridors.
Thank you, Mr. Nguri.
Allocating funding.
Sorry, I thought you concluded, my apologies, keep going.
Sorry. Allocation of this funding to carry out any improvement and construction work of other part of the city or interest group is unethical. Funding of the park supposed to be going to the fund, to the construction of the park. Again, there should not be any delay on the construction, and I see this timing beeps, but I had some more.
Thank you, Mr. Nguri. Appreciate you coming, sorry, your time has concluded.
Yeah.
Again, make sure you get with Mr. Zavala, thank you. Our next speaker is Danielle Tucker.
Mayor, she has not answered the phone yet.
Okay. No one, Danielle Tucker's not here, okay. Sue Freyberg.
Hello, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. I would really appreciate it if you paid attention to what I have to say, since your political futures could be affected by the decisions you are about to make regarding the city of Fort Worth. As a citizen of Fort Worth, I'm concerned that you're about to lead us down a path of higher taxes for little to no gain. We are aware that there is a decision to be made regarding the future of EMS service. Understandably, things change over time. However, change for change's sake, or for the hubris of the department head, is no reason to dismantle a worldwide known and respected organization. The same organization has been providing high-quality clinical care for over 30 years to this and surrounding communities at no cost. It is now asking for assistance in overcoming some of the same challenges that all EMS services are facing. That cost in comparison to dismantling the system and utilizing a firebase system is tens of millions of dollars different. Now, you may have been influenced by backdoor politics and smear campaigns, but you need to look at the true value of the service provided to this community and the innovations in EMS that have come as a result of this service. EMS has changed over the years, and MedStar has been in the forefront of these changes. Additionally, many members of this council accept campaign donations from the very same organizations that stand to benefit from any change to the current model. This reeks of corruption, and those members should recuse themselves from any and all decisions to be made by this council in regards to any changes to be made. This comes to you anonymously in fear of retaliation from department that I have devoted several years to. Many members of the fire department came to work as firefighters, and it was with full knowledge that the EMS was run by a different organization that works in a partnership with each other. The current administration has created a divisive and toxic culture that threatens to destroy these relationships that have been built over time. No organization is perfect, and both have their negative qualities, but the overwhelming qualities of both are positive and patient care-centered. In conclusion, please think carefully about the decision you're going to make and how it impacts each of the taxpaying citizens and this community, as well as your ability to look the citizens in the eye and tell them that you're doing this for the betterment of the community and not just for political and single-minded gain. Thank you.
Sue, just a quick question, I can't, I wanna respect the anonymity of the remarks there, if it's you personally or of whoever wants to be anonymous, I can have Val Washington reach out to you, and you can have a conversation with her, who's helping to supervise the ad hoc emergency management committee. That's up to you.
I guess you could reach out to me.
Okay, thank you, we'll do that, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Jim DeLong.
Good evening, my name is Jim DeLong. It's an honor to stand before you tonight. In 1859, Charles Dickens wrote a book called A Tale of Two Cities. And his opening lines are immortal in literary circles. It was the best of times, it was the worst of times. It was the age of wisdom, it was the age of foolishness. It was the epoch of belief, it was the epoch of crudility. It was the season of light, it was the season of darkness. It was the spring of hope, it was the winter of despair. Sound familiar? It could be written about the times that we're in. There's such a divide of people's ideology. For a few times, I've, I had a red ball, and I spoke about a red ball, and some people think it's called green, and when it, when it's really red, people will go to the mat for their ideology. And if you look at this list, it's interesting, the title of the book is A Tale of Two Cities, but it's talking about one city. It was the tale of two ideologies. And that's what we face today. And so, you know, why am I bringing this up? Because if we can open our eyes and to see that different people can have totally, they can look at the same thing, they can experience the same thing, and they could have opposite feelings about it. It could be the best of times to some, the worst of times to others. It can be an age of wisdom, it can be an age of foolishness. It could be a season of light, or it can be a season of darkness. And that's what we're presented with today. So it's a challenge to all of us here in this room. It's a challenge to all that will hear my voice speak this on YouTube. What are you gonna look at? How are you gonna look at it? You know, you have the glass half-full, a pessimist sees that it's half-empty. An optimist sees that it's half-full. I can look at an empty glass without there being a vapor of water in it, I see it overflowing. Because I believe in the human condition, I believe through the centuries, man has proven that we can excel, that we can come together, and as we come together, there's unity, there's strength in unity. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dong. Our next speaker is Mohammed Farokh, followed by Walid Abalhamad. Mr. Mohammed?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, I give you with the best of the greetings, peace be upon all of us present here. Mayor, we did have the open house, we invited, we had invited all of you. I understand, everybody has a busy schedule, it would have been nice to have you there. We had, we had a good community show, and we discussed a lot of issues and also educated a lot of people. Our invitation to all of you is always open. You're always welcome to get in touch with us and stop by and talk about the issues that I talked about last time. Regarding obviously the community, our community is facing racism, Islamophobia, phobia, antisemitism, and obviously the need for ceasefire. With that, with that, what I'd like to say is that I wonder why it has to be that elected officials and politicians can only react at the fear of getting booted out. Michiganders spoke, and they spoke loudly last week. And after that, number two in the administration, Kamala Harris, on Sunday, did call out for a ceasefire. And in fact, invited Benny Gantz bypassing Netanyahu on Monday. But why am I saying all this? I'm saying all this because we are a global world. What we do here, especially with our tax dollars, impacts a lot of us abroad. And one of the reasons is that, I'm gonna show you this picture. At city council, sorry, the there's a person sleeping here, right, right outside. Now, we can spend those tax dollars, and if y'all have ever driven on Lancaster, you know what I'm talking about, the homeless situation, I don't have to preach that over here. That's our tax dollars, council members. That's our tax dollars, council members. We, this is happening in Gaza on our watch with our tax dollars, and I've said that before. And we have a lot to do with it. So I'd be happy if some of you could call. One of the defense contractors, and tell them, you know what? You can ship a lot of missiles and military equipment abroad, but for everything shipped, give us $1, and I bet you we can solve these issues. Other than that, if Moses and Abraham were on your right, Jesus and Lot and Joseph and Jonah, peace be upon all of them, were on your left, what would they advise you to do as far as the humanity calls? And in contemporary history, if Mandela and Gandhi was on your right, Mayor, and Malcolm X and Martin Luther King were on your left, what would they advise you to do for people's suffering in the world? Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Walad Abdalhamad.
I greet you with the greetings of Islam. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Peace be upon you and God's mercy and blessings. You guys are all familiar with this ceasefire resolution that we've been begging for everywhere all over the country. I want to speak to everyone in this room, not just the city council members, not just the mayor. But I've already said this last time, I'm going to say it again. This country has been built on racism towards all minorities. It has enabled systematic oppression and violence time and time again. It was built upon taking people out of its land, the same way Israel has been taking the land from its people. And it has been very, has been made very, very clear in the last few months. This isn't only about the innocence of Palestinians or Muslims or Arabs or whatever minority you think of, but this is also about American citizens, just like my brother Mohammed just mentioned. There are people who are affected here in this country. There is a brother whose name is Zakaria that we mentioned a few weeks ago. He was stabbed in Arlington. He's from Arlington, he was stabbed in Austin. He wasn't doing anything, he just had a flag on his car. There's also Aaron Bushnell, who we're all familiar with. We all know what just happened to him. We have Talat Khan, a Muslim physician who was stabbed in Houston due to Islamophobia during the last four months. Wadiya Al Fayyum stabbed 26 times, a kid, 26 times, an American citizen because of a lie that President Biden said. That he, that his administration later on came by, came back and said that that was a lie, that wasn't, that was fabricated. We're all very frustrated, we're all hurt by this, and we're asking for a ceasefire for our, for all of humanity's sake. America has been tearing the Middle East apart, tearing it apart, time and time again. We're just here to make our voices heard for them and for anyone who might, could be affected by this. It could be me, it could be my sister, it could be my brother. I don't want to see anyone get hurt. We've been saying it time and time again that we want peace, we want a ceasefire. Over the last couple of weeks, Kamala Harris came out, or I think it was the last week or two, she wants to, he, they want a six-week ceasefire. And if you look into the, between the lines, you know why they're asking for it. And the Biden administration, inside the White House, they sent out an anonymous call for a ceasefire. So like my brother Mohammed said, Texas was the last about slavery, don't be the last to call for a ceasefire. Assalamualaikum.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Asayi Joffrey, followed by Noor Hassan.
Hello, esteemed council members. I stand before you today with a question that goes beyond the boundaries of our media community. When you leave your neighborhood, what do you see? Busting streets, familiar faces, signs of everyday life. But do you ever consider what the people in Gaza see when they step out of their homes? They see a landscape desecrated by bombs and destruction. Now, you may wonder what this has to do with you? Well, I'm a resident of District 2. Let's make this clear. When I come out of my neighborhood, I don't just eat people like neighbors and busting streets. I see, I see the supplies of weapons that contribute to mass destruction in Gaza, all the systems. Council members, I understand that you may feel tired and perhaps annoyed by our persistent calls for change. After all, you've said that you don't see it happening or that it was beyond your control. But let me share what truly tires and annoys me, having to repeatedly ask those who are meant to represent me to fulfill their responsibilities and to exhibit basic human compassion. Do you want to know what I find truly exhausting? Witnessing the refusal to acknowledge and act against atrocities occurring. And I'm not the only one who feels this way. Recently, a young Air Force member from Texas set himself on fire because he was so tired of this ongoing genocide. Before he died, he said, "I will no longer be complicit in genocide." I implore you to consider the weight of your decisions. The only outcome of turning a blind eye to the ongoing genocide is a stain of innocent blood on your hands. How can you, as representatives, remain unmoved when faced with the constituents who have not lost one, who have not lost two, but 20 members of their family? How can you justify an action when confronted with the human tolls of your indecision? We come to you not out of a desire for inconvenience, but out of desperation, hoping that you will recognize the gravity of the situation and take a stand for justice and humanity. Council members, the time for change is now. The responsibility lies on your shoulders, and the choice you make will shape the legacy of our city and its stance on morality and compassion. Let us not be remembered as the community that turned its back on those in need, but that one that stood up against injustice and worked towards a world where people can live without the fear of bombs and destruction. Thank you.
Speaker is Noor Hassan, followed by Arsalan Joffrey.
Council members, thank you so much for letting me speak today. My name is Noor Hassan. I am a citizen of Fort Worth. I have been born, raised, gone to school, married, opened and closed businesses here. And I am here to talk to you about the same thing that the last few speakers have spoken about, but I'm going to paint you a different picture. Several years ago, a movie came out. It was called The Hunger Games. And I know that whether you watched it, you have no doubt that you've heard about it. And I remember specifically, when I watched this movie, I couldn't imagine how someone could even imagine this world, how they could imagine the cruelties they showed and how they were able to depict it. Let's forget the fact that three movies came out and then recently the prequel to it. And now, looking at it, I wonder, wow, if we tried to make a movie today about today's things, we wouldn't even be able to rate it. We wouldn't be able to show these things. You all saw CNN is finally covering the, covering the media footage after four months, the atrocities that are happening. Everybody knows what happened recently, the flower massacre, the fact that just over basic flour and water, they're being shot up and killed in the streets. No one is stopping them, no one is giving aid, no one is allowing, they're hurting the humanitarians, they're hurting the people helping, they're hurting the ones trying to get the food. All they're doing is trying to get flour and water. That's it. They're not committing any crimes, they're not doing anything, they're not saying anything. They're just trying to get basic food. We can't even show documentaries of what's going on because they're so horrific. We can't even, even imagine as privileged citizens of the United States what they actually are going through because we haven't seen that kind of cruelty in our country. And now, one way or another, America will always be remembered for its complicity. And let's be honest, as American citizens, we are all complicit because we all pay taxes and hundreds of thousands of dollars go from Fort Worth alone. And as long as we are members of this city, we are all complicit. And so, together, we should all think about the fact that we want this to be ended and stopped and that we need to figure out a way. I have been told countless times here that you guys don't have jurisdiction and you have no power, but you have far more power than we do. And that's why I have no doubt that you want to make sure that in our history, Fort Worth doesn't look like what it's done in the past, that America will look better. It's up to you to decide how your story will be written and how you will be remembered. It should not be elicited by fear or being kicked out. You should want to hope that this is what I would want for myself and for my family or my community. And that's why I am begging, please, we need to stop the funding to Israel. We need the money locally. We need it in our city for so many things I've been listed tonight and more so. And we need to request for a ceasefire resolution. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Arsalan Joffrey, followed by Rachel Thompson.
Okay, before we get started with the main speech, I just wanted to put it out there that rather than providing a subsidy to Bell Textron for expansion, might be more useful for parks. But as a recap of our last sessions, we have normalized and tolerated the following: mass murder of civilians, execution of children, execution of people waving white flags, murdering of the first responders, collective punishment through blockade of humanitarian aid for starvation, destruction of homes, hospitals, and schools. It's now day 153 of the live streaming of the genocide, and the new list of things that we are willing to normalize and tolerate now include death of at least 10 children through starvation, execution of starving people that are attempting to get aid. The flower massacre is the largest of those events, it is not the only one of those events. Execution of prisoners after they're used for whatever purpose that the military deemed necessary, like telling a hospital to evacuate before they destroy it and then executing that individual. The beating of family members of captives who are protesting for a peaceful release of their family members, you know, through tear gas and water cannons. 2% of the Gazan population has now been exterminated in six months compared to the 3% of the Japanese that were killed over a six-year conventional war. Okay, an American serviceman has set himself on fire. His last words, "My name is Aaron Bushnell. I am an active-duty member of the United States Air Force. I will no longer be complicit in the genocide. I am about to engage in extreme active protest, but compared to what the people of Palestine have been experiencing at the hands of their oppressor, this is not extreme at all. This is what the ruling class has decided to be normal." Not my words, his words. I warned you guys last time. You know, we will have the society we are willing to tolerate. So we will keep coming and asking the city to pass a ceasefire resolution because what is normal and what should be tolerable is peace and a logical path forward, not the bliss of the ignorance that we are trying to stay in, or even worse, the complicity and silence. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rachel Thompson.
Good evening, council. My name is Rachel Thompson, and I came before you today to request that you speak up for injustice and demand an immediate and permanent ceasefire for Gaza. Our community looks towards its leaders for guidance, and it's up to you, the council before me today, to use your voice, to use your voice to take a stand against this genocide and no longer be complicit. I'm able to stand before you today because my grandparents were able to escape Ukraine from Russian aggression many years ago, and now my grandfather is watching it happen yet again in his homeland. Thankfully, with the support of the U.S., Ukraine has been able to fight against the greed and oppression, something that Gaza has not been afforded. Instead, our government continues to send bombs and weapons to Israel aiding in the genocide of the Palestinian people. It's easy to take the stance that this is bigger than a citywide issue, that speaking out and making a statement won't do anything of scale when decisions of war are made at higher levels. If the loss of innocent lives is not enough to take action, then how about the loss of tax dollars that could be going into investing in our cities and working to solve the plethora of problems we have here? Instead, we are forced to fund the bombs killing innocent lives who have just as much right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness with our tax dollars. Though we may live under the false sense of security that within the U.S. border that we could never fathom something of this nature happening here, I ask that you just take a moment to imagine your children under the rubble. Imagine it's your children crying and unable to move due to hunger, and there's not a single thing you can do about it because the world chooses to sit by instead of intervene. The actions of the IOF in Gaza directly impact our local community. People settling, people are setting themselves on fire in the streets because they cannot stand to see the atrocities unfold and hear the cowardice in the silence of our elected officials. Changes in our country begin at a local level, and I believe you became, you came into this position because you have a great love and commitment to your community and want to make a difference. Do not underestimate the difference your voice can make. This is nothing to do with blue or red, left or right, it's right and wrong. All I ask is that you use your voice to speak up for what is right and imagine the message that it would send if on a citywide level throughout the nation that cities called for a ceasefire. I believe that we have the ability to make change, but we must speak up for humanity depends on it, free Palestine. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Akifa Khan, followed by Adrian Smith by phone.
Hi, my name is Akifa Khan, and I am in District 6. I grew up in Fort Worth. I went to J.T. Stevens. I'm South African Indian. My parents, my dad, he, he was in a place called Riverside in Durban, South Africa. And under the South African government at that time, they had a, they, they kicked my dad and grandparents out the house for, to replace it and rezone it as a white-only area. And that was just as a South African Indian. As a South African black person, it was even worse. They had to live in something called a, they had to live in basically a Batustan, that's what it was called. The parallels between South Africa and Israel right now, South Africa would call them foreign natives. Israel calls them present absentees. So my grand uncle, he came here to America, to Fort Worth in the '70s. He came here because he wanted to have a right to education. He came here to study aeronautical engineering. He couldn't do that in South Africa because of his ethnicity, because of his skin tone. So, well, he, he served in the military, in the Air Force. He studied at UTA. I studied at UTA. I have a degree in history and African-American studies. I want to say that you should need to be, we all need to be on the right side of history. We need to say no to what, to what our federal government is doing right now. We need to call for a permanent ceasefire. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Khan. Our last speaker is Adrian Smith by phone. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes, Adrian Smith. I am, Adrian Smith, I am one with the people. When a dur is caught in headlights, what, what happens to it? When a dur is caught in headlights, what usually happens to it? I say that to say this. To the chairperson and to the representatives of the various districts of this city, please stop patronizing individuals when they come before you to speak and call out the things that you are not doing and that you should be doing. To the representative of District 8, sir, I am watching the current, the most recent, I guess, discuss- I guess discussing that was had with the historic South Side community, 23 years of disinvestment by this city. Although you weren't, were not a part of the 420, you did not represent in the position you in for the last 23 years, you are now the current representative, sir. You have a obligation to ensure that this, this necessary development gets off the ground. It seems as if, again, like I said the last week, that County Island has taken more importance than the historic South Side. So I'm, I'm gonna leave that there. I have more to say on it, but I'm gonna leave that there. To the individuals of Moja Valley who came out to speak in regards to the 10 years of empty promises as relates to your part, again, it's, it's your representative. This falls on your representative. But you all have obligations, we all have obligations as people. We put these individuals in, we can take them out. And we don't have to wait to an election year. There is the power of recall. So I want people to be mindful of that. We have a power of recall always at our side. And although the representative of District 5 has stated that she's no longer going to run, be assured that she's going to advocate for someone else. So I say, go with the opposite. As, as it relates to the dismantling of our EMS paramedics system, I hope this isn't true. But if it is, shame on you, council. And to the individuals who collect the voices and stand on behalf of the Palestinian people, again, we have a power to vote these individuals out. They've already made their stance with the proclamation that they, that they've decided upon. So just use the power to vote and let's get them out. The people of Palestine have a right to exist.
Thank you, Adrian. Council, do have one more speaker. Ms. Ramon did walk in. I wanted to honor her time to speak. Rita, if you want to come down, please.
Hello. I'm here to speak about the homeless problem we have in here. I wrote some statement down. It's kind of like a poem, kind of. But I wrote this. A homeless, a person without a home still wants to feel safe. And without a home, to feel safe, that person feels lost. Hopefully, not lost forever, but will help come in time, or not most likely at all. That person without a home feels even more lost and hopeless. The help will never come. That person without a home will continue to do her best with what she has and be grateful that she wakes up another day. Hello, my name is Rita Ramon. I've been homeless too many times to count. And every time I'm homeless, it's even harder to get the help I need, which makes me more depressed. I refuse to take down any more numbers as I already know that numbers that say they will help you only lead to dead ends and more depression. I went to the other meeting about the homeless, and I couldn't sit through the whole meeting because I wanted to comment. And I was thinking, no one is going to get help they need because no one is being accountable for their actions. One other point I heard is that you were trying to follow Houston homeless problem, but I can tell you that I was homeless in Houston, too. I never got the help I need there to find a home for me and my daughter. So I came back to Fort Worth in 2012. I managed to move into a garage apartment in the north side of Fort Worth. Stayed there for four years with my daughter and still wanted a safer place for me and my daughter to call home. So the first chance I got, I moved the me and my daughter to the west side of Fort Worth and stayed there for seven years, recently illegally evicted. Another point that, at that meeting that I heard is that someone said that people want homeless people to disappear. But that will, won't happen at all if you still ignore the problem and not keep these organizations accountable for not keeping a high standard for customer service for people in need. That's all. Thank you.
Counsel, that's the conclusion of our meeting. Thank you.